You're being a quorum. I recall you need to order. The meeting is being recorded by the recording clerk. For record keeping and also by Mr. Gant on video. Does anybody else like to report? They're hearing them, we'll move forward. There's an attendant sheet that I know that somebody's been kind enough to fill out. That would be appreciated. Do you want that?
Uh, no, I just, I just want people to know it's there.
So this is a warrant session of the board of selectmen. Certainly was as my thought process that we divided deliberation on a warrant into two parts. I just thought it would be more efficient to have at least some hint of sleep before we started the second half. We did go through everything but the school-related items. Oh, that was yesterday? And, and so, you know, reserving the right to deliberate on anything that we legally are allowed to. I'm hoping the attendant really will be able to go through the items on the warrant. Appreciate various members of our town government coming. Obviously, the baseline is making sure we have accurate information, we understand the information that's involved. When you get to this point, it has a lot to do, it's almost like a, not an intentional show game, maybe that's a bad image, but it's hard sometimes to track what's in the number and what's not in the number. And so Catherine didn't have enough to be able to make sure that we don't fall prey to that. This is how I start this thought process. To me, it starts with, this, another thing that's really hard, this year somehow it's even harder, is the linkage between what the school committee does, what the FinCon does, and what we do. And it's highly interrelated, but it's different. It's distinct. So, there's a certain element of this, for me at least, that needed to have the FinCon balance the budget. And I finger quotes on that, but essentially, while there's no finality to it yet, that gives us what I always, when I was in the FinCon called the baseline. So if it's a balanced budget, it's like you have a place for your feet to stand on solid earth. So you know if it's balanced, that if you add to it, on the expense side, you add to it, something else has to go, or it becomes unbalanced. So, and it may not be balanced as a penny, but it's close to that. Obviously, legally as a town, we need to have a balanced budget. So, it's my understanding that, at least for this point in the process, the FinCon has done. And they've done so good, what in my opinion is a reasonable balance of free cash, so you don't endanger fiscal situation for next year. And they've done so, at this point, this is where I want to make sure, Steve, well, you're giving a minute, but you missed the beginning of my speech.
I'm going home. All right. Hi, Steve.
Which, which was, you know, obviously for nothing else, we want to be sure that we really got the right numbers, and that we know if there's a number, what's in the number, what's not in the number. So, I'm working from a very recent recap sheet, and they are $101,000 under the limit, and we need to have a buffer and this and that, so they're functionally balanced. So at this point, it's not about criticizing or loving or not loving what's in there, it's about knowing what's in there at the balanced budget, right? So this, at this moment in the conversation, this is without override balanced budget. So if I'm reading it correctly, they've given the elementary schools what is probably a mathematical calculation away from being the FinCon guideline, it comes out on NHIS 2.62 percent, which for conversational purposes, I'm going to say is the three percent.
That is correct.
So my question to Catherine or Steve, who are probably the best people, is there anything else in the balanced budget relative to the schools?
So, in terms of free cash, there's items that are being addressed on Monday night. Those will show up in that budget there. You shaking your head?
Yeah, it doesn't help me at all. I, I need to know if there's anything in here for the schools, like for example, is the, does, the funding source doesn't matter at this point? Well, it's free cash or it's something else, but it's in here, not subject to override or not, that's what I need to know. So for example, like is the security system in?
No, no, those are the items that...
That's it.
Yes.
We're just using different words.
Yes, yeah.
So I need to understand.
Yeah.
Okay. No technology specifically?
The technology's not in there, the security system's not in there, and I believe the school's base request is not in there. If they did, we gave guidelines at this point.
Okay, period. I just want to be sure there isn't something that's not visible to me. So if we say that the only thing that's in the balanced budget, if we override it and consider, is the base budget roughly at the level of the FinCon guideline?
Yes.
Okay, very helpful. But, seeing good or bad in terms of content, but at least we know what it is. So, to me, that means unless there's something done within that, those constraints by the FinCon, for the schools to get anything else, it needs to be placed on, not on a warrant, but on an override.
Yes.
Kelly, yes?
Yes.
Steve, yes, just in the general sense, it's, you're not in your advocacy role.
No, 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 yes, sir, and I, just to make sure that I understand everything, what we're saying is FY eight, FY nineteen, local appropriation, plus the guideline of 212 is what we're calling the base, correct?
I have, 212 or 91 was the difference.
Yes, sir. I, I just wanted to make sure, I understand what the term the base is.
Yep.
Thank you.
To clarify one of your points, though.
Yep.
The only exception to what you just said are the one-time funds for technology and for the security system. So those are several warrant articles. They're not...
We, we got to have the same semantics.
Yes.
Oh, they're, they're, they might have other funding sources besides an override.
Exactly, yes.
Okay, gotcha.
They're separated.
But they're, but... But, but they're not in the warrant.
No.
Not correct. Right, okay. You may have other specific dedicated funding sources, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, correct.
All right, so we need to be real clear on that as we progress. All right, so... So one that we know is that the currently contemplated, this is where it breaks out a little because we're separate committees, but in the contemplated warrant, we have a warrant article for the safety and security systems.
Yes.
In the draft, should I say?
Yes.
All right, so... Oh, here it is, I got you. And is that $170,000?
Yes.
And we're saying that if the board selectmen maintains the draft warrant, that that's on there, that it will be on there, it's above what we just talked about. And at the moment, we don't believe it needs an override.
Correct.
Is there anything else that either is in the draft warrant, or could be put in the draft warrant for the schools, that does not, that you've got an overriding warrant that doesn't, we do not require an override, or everything else is overriding?
The, the two items, one is minor, but it's the scrubber.
The scrubber, okay.
The scrubber will be covered in a special term, you can worry.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
For about $14,000. No issue with that, we have allocation for that. The only other outstanding item that hasn't been placed in the draft warrant or anywhere else is the request for, I think it was about $371,000 in the technology.
Right.
Request.
Discussion.
Correct. It's 390, just 390.
Everybody that's here, would you...
Yeah, except Mark, that 170, when you said that, we would not need an override for the 170. If I recall from the other night, they were talking about 200K in free cash, and we had to give back to them on whether we wanted that for the camera system or for the technology. So I'm not sure where the 170 figure was, is coming down, because it was a 200K figure the other night.
So that's a, I, I totally know what you're talking about, I've heard it.
Right.
And this may not be real helpful, but that's a FinCon discussion. It's a little bit of a different approach.
Okay.
You know, I, I heard, that's an accurate rendition.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What they asked about, we're doing it.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we were on the same page.
Yeah, sometimes. So we have the security system as a contemplative, I don't know what to use. The other thing I guess I should have stressed is, and again, board members can make motions and whatnot, but I'm trying to approach this as a working session for us to grapple with some of the issues, to hopefully come up with a direction. And then Monday, a regular meeting is when I'm on plate actually doing all these things. Okay? All right. So then we have, do you have other copies of these?
Yes, we have some copies, I think we can go to my lookouts.
So...
Is it up on Board Doc's there?
Yes.
Yeah, if you can put it up here, that would be great.
So Kelly and Lynn were kind enough to try and give us a tool, and that's all this is. And it was done at my request, in the sense of, I believe at this point in the process of this committee, we should be dealing in what I'm going to call a category of a level not an item by item. Personally, my, one of my themes in life is to know what I know and know what I don't know. And I've said this to many of you individually, if not here, absolutely true, that we're able to have, to attract and hire a superintendent after Dr. Creedon's illustrious career, that's as talented as a college superintendent is. We have a great school committee, we have Steve still us. I'm not the educational expert, I'm just talking personally. I defer to that group of people to know what our kids need in the schools, and I think you've done an amazing job of putting that together and enunciating it. For me personally, if you all say that's what the kids need, that's not on my table of question. The question for the finance committee, whatever they want to question, they can question. But for me, it ties then into affordability, into, we just, as I think of it, we just received a triple A bonus. That may mean more to some people than others, but that isn't just from work that's been done the last couple of years, that's based on decades of sound financial approaches by the series of FinCons that we've been having, fortunate enough to have. I feel that we have a obligation not only to address the schools' needs, but to protect what the bonus specifically, like the financial status, the entire, I think, we should put so much time in the last two years, codifying financial guidelines. The last two years, a lot of it has been based on conversations about the amount of debt that we've incurred from major projects. Personally, I have to take that into the mix, like do it a service to other citizens if I ignore that. So that's the stage that my head's at. How can we achieve what needs to be achieved by the schools? I'm not questioning any of the elements of that. And that's our burden. So that's what we're here to do, to try and approach. And to me, it has something to do with taking a bit more time to accomplish. To me, what's really, really difficult is everything in one year, in particular this year, these are just my personal views. The other thing, and personally, that I just feel is, I am really uncomfortable with my having a safety net. And to me, an approach that asks for everything at once, but doesn't build in a what if that doesn't pass, no disrespect to your political campaign efforts, I just, I've seen what I've seen, I've seen what's passed, I've seen what hasn't. I acknowledge there may be some demographic, there undoubtedly is some demographic shift. I'm not sure it's shifted that far, that fast. Not only, in my humble opinion, does a school committee have a fiduciary duty to protect the schools, but so do we. And I said it, oh, they said the other one, so does the finance committee. So that's where I'm coming from, this. We need to talk about what elements of the request by this school committee we feel should go onto the ballot. It's not really a question of supporting substantively or not supporting, it's, to me, it's more of a question of putting on a warrant or not. And then, those are subjects of override, we have a whole host of possibilities of how that's structured. But I'd like to keep the structure to level, level two. So, I'm going to go a little further, and I'll stop the lecture, and let other selectmen jump in. That tool that's up there, I don't know, it's almost, the pink doesn't come through a ton. So again, this is an attempt to bring forward discussion about categories. So, let me go a little further in my thoughts, and we'll see what other thoughts I have. I guess we work from the bottom. So, I have stated unequivocally my opinion in a number of forums that, number one, I'm not saying there shouldn't be a number two or a number three, but number one is not letting the schools go backwards. And there's been a loss of funding, there's been erosion by virtue of the budgets each year, and the cost of personnel, and those kinds of things. But that's the first category. And that brings us up to a level of an override for a little under $500,000. We have this at 468, I thought it was 490 something, but for purposes of discussion, that's, it's illustrated on this. Anybody in the selectmen?
Is that the correct number, 468?
So, when we talk about, when we talk about... Just want to make sure, when we talk about the 468, that would describe, what I would describe as level service and protecting the core. On this, based on...
Yeah, that's what we do.
The adjustment sheet that I, that we have been working...
Yeah, you're the source of all this, Steve.
So, the 468, 721.80, to be exact, I understand you use rounding, but that number protects the core in what we're describing at this stage, level service.
Everything is pink and yellow on that sheet.
Level service for this year, not like three years ago.
This on our sheet is pink.
Yeah.
This is a team.
Yes, sir, okay.
So it's right through across here, if you have a sheet.
See, I couldn't reach that, so I'm glad you're there.
Yeah. Wait until you get to here, my, my arm is short.
No, no, I'm stuck at the, the 1.69, that's fine.
This is what we're looking at right now.
Yes, sir.
This is four and five on this side.
I'm, I'm good. I agree, yeah.
Steve, your terminology was that you can, that you term level service, why do you use the same term, level service?
Although, I'm going to jump in there, because I'm one of the people that initiated the request to do that. It's something that we use.
I just want to know what he means by...
It's something I'm trying to tell you. The question is asked very early in the process, it's what would be the number to keep the schools at the same level as they are today?
Okay.
That's the call.
Not losing any service.
That's the answer, that's the answer, Steve.
I agree with, with Mr. Lai's assumption.
That's the question.
Yeah, it's a very valid baseline, whatever your view is. That, that's what it is. This may seem a touch out of step, but in terms of conversations that have occurred, this doesn't, just confirm, I mean, clarify, because I can see in the sheet, that there's been a request to have $100,000 in the base budget relative to technology. Okay, so that, I've just, plus minus, good, bad, but it's not in that number.
Correct. But we do see it in...
We're going up, we're working up.
Yeah, we work up, Steve.
It's not in that number, just want to clarify. All right?
Yes, sir.
The next, anyway, people may disagree, I can't say level of importance, but to me, there's some level of criticalness to that. The next level up is called restoration. And, and help us, please, I think that means that we lost certain things over the last few years that are significant.
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
So it's a, I don't know why the word's called erosion, but it's some type of erosion in the level.
Yes, in part, we talk about professional development, and the other piece too, we talk about the instructional support specialist, that reflects a loss of funding that we realized last year in the form of Title I.
Oh, okay, that's where the Title I took in?
It started, yes, it, it, that's where it started. Because we had a boom starting in FY 13, where we received an extraordinary amount of money, which allowed us to enhance programs. And then, we're, we're getting the warning, we started losing money last year, and we're getting the warning now that we could lose almost all of it, not all of it, if not all of it.
Dick, I know you have something particular about that, forget your whole, you have thought last night? I just want to get everybody...
Yes, sir.
All right, so, and the 593, that's not an additional 593, that's cumulative on our numbers.
I understand.
So, if there are an override or a combination of overrides for a little under $600,000, that would accomplish the level services and some of the stuff that's been lost, and put us at that baseline for like a year.
Correct.
Doesn't, just like that level, that, someone, maybe you'd said to me something about we had a million something override a few years back, I conveniently blocked that out of memory, but I don't, but, but in the last number of years, and that's a big override for this historic...
In, in recent years, that I...
Correct. But that still only adds us to that point.
Yes, sir.
There's nothing new in there.
Not new, no.
Yeah, no judgment at this point, I'm just...
No, understand.
All right, all the select people, wrong? They do well. Then we get into, we've had a very eloquent enunciation by a combination of our administration and our school committee about where these schools should go. Part of it's relative to where they should go compared to our sister towns of Millville and Barksford. And other parts of it, as I understand, are just in terms of the country and life, and doing what the schools are supposed to be doing. But now we're into a territory of, can you say improvement or...
Enhancement.
What word, enhancement?
I think that's, can I... I think that is somewhat fair, but I just want to add a little bit of a caveat to that. So the special education positions, you know, that you see, are to create a program that doesn't exist today. And so in order to do that and service the needs that legally we need to service, if we didn't get these positions, in a way, it would be going backwards, because we'd be pulling a teacher that's currently in the co-taught model, that we've been working towards, out of that model, even though we've already trained them, right, for that, in order to provide that program. So I just want to give you that context.
Okay, that's okay.
And, right, and the same, we kind of feel the same about tech, because if you don't put tech in the budget, you're going, everything's a year older again, right, on top of what the numbers are that we, you know, shared with you guys. So it, it is, it is in a way going backwards, because you're not able to go forwards, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
So, but yes, that's how we, but we did categorize it.
Yeah, and, and different reasons, people can categorize it differently.
Yeah. I just want to give you the context on the thinking on those.
Can I, can I interrupt here just for a second?
Of course.
For clarification. Katrina, that, that chart is a little bit difficult to read, but you see that there's really two line items under enhancement. And that 676 really only includes the 83,572, okay? And I think what you're saying is, it's not right to do that and not do the other two, is that what you're saying? As far as the two lines, see the, the 80...
I didn't hear that, but of course Katrina's prepared something. But I didn't hear that.
I think they're distinct, but she feels B would also contribute to their going backwards.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you said, you're implying that if you don't do B up there, then you're kind of going backwards.
I feel it, yes. I think that that's, I do think...
I just wanted to clarify that that was your point.
Yes, yes.
And, and since we're doing that in the same mode, because I appreciate the mode that you're in, CLIC, that's what?
That's CLIC, the creative, integrated curriculum, that was implemented at Proctor several years ago. It's been on the, it was initially funded by TEF, yeah?
We got a grant from the foundation?
Yep, and then we took that on as a committee, and it's been on the requests from school committees and Steve or someone else correctly, if I'm wrong, for at least five years, to expand that program from a, it's a .6 right now, to a 1.0, so that the children at Stewart School also could benefit from that same program. And one of the reasons why we feel it's so important is because it really fits in with our three pillars, the pillar of project-based learning, it's a creative learning curriculum, and really does a lot to enhance that, and not just as an enrichment outside the classroom for kids, but that person works with the classroom teachers on helping them to create projects that support project-based learning in their classrooms. So, that's, it's a small dollar amount compared to everything else, but we do feel like there is great value in that expansion.
Then we have a proposal for five-day tuition-free kindergarten, clearly something on a state level that's coming down the road. The essence of it, as I understand it, is the free part, that we offer it, now what does a tuition do, correct?
Correct.
To two of the days?
And it's not available that long?
Three days are given free?
If you have a three-day, if you have, you can participate in a three-day program, and that's, there's no cost for that. You participate in a five-day program, you pay for two days.
No, you pay for the five days.
Is that correct?
Yes.
You pay a total number, you pay a total, I think it's easier just to think about it as a total number of tuition for five days, of $3,400.
So then you don't get the three free days that's taken away from you, you have to pay the...
Never, in the history of it, it's never been looked at as the day, per day, see?
Correct.
It's been looked at as a total tuition for the five day.
And right now, it's not avail, not everyone can get the five day.
Which is not enough.
It's not enough, so you can, you know, you're in a lottery, and you pray.
What is the tuition for the five day?
So it's $3,400, and just a little bit of a correction, Dan, to that, the year before I got here, so three years ago, they used to have two three-day classes and two five-day classes. Because of the changing needs of the town, they switched that to three five-day classes and one three-day class. So, the lottery system is not as intense as some people remember it, because there's more options for five days.
But the demand is clearly shifting.
Yes. We still currently only have 10 signed up for three days.
Those classes all filled to capacity?
We only have 10.
The three is not.
The three-day only has 10 students signed up.
The three-day only has 10, but the five-days are filled to capacity?
We do our best to make sure that, so, I, I can give you a really good example, it's reassuring to see the five graduate interns on there, because if our five-day gets above 20, we add one of those interns to that kindergarten five-day to help mediate the class size.
The reason I'm asking is that for many parents, the decision, and I'm not trying to in any way demean those who are in fixed incomes or someone, but for younger parents, I think the convenience and confidence in having students essentially in a form of daycare at a critical time of the day, for five days, exceeds the cost of whether they have to pay or not. And I'm just concerned that if we offer that to some, are we being able to offer it to all who want it, if we just might ask about the capacity?
At this point in time, yes. You know, but I don't know how many people register over the summer.
Got you.
Carol, can you repeat the numbers where we stand against the state? How many cities and towns have it, and how many don't?
293 provide it, I know that offhand.
So about the 350 cities and towns, 293 provide it?
293 provide it, and, yeah.
Okay, so that gives us a good flavor that the... Okay, so that gives us a good feeling that the, the, yeah, new classroom question, I think that's got to do with the class size.
Yes.
Okay, so, I don't know how to phrase it, so, so class size generally has come to something very important and I'm not, I understand there's a feeling that everything is supported on the sheet, but you have a little bit more of a feeling of why it's had to talk.
Yeah, well, I think that's really just because we voted to kind of last it sort of, so it, what happened is last year, we were seeing an increase in the population coming into Proctor and it was put before us that we should add an additional class section where the class sizes were going to be up at about twenty-three, some of them now, Sarah?
Yep.
In the fourth, current fourth grade right now. And last year, in order to try to meet guideline, we did not fulfill that request. We cut the ELA learning specialist, we cut the PD, we tried to stay at level service because of the impact of the envelope projects. And so the, what has happened is that those classes have been twenty-three this year and those parents are pretty upset because historically we've tried to keep the class size at twenty or below and that's in line with what our sister communities also do and what we feel is best for, for teaching and learning. So this year, a lot of parents were really advocating hard to, to encourage us to, to put that on. So it, it's not, I don't think necessarily where it is in that line item really reflects maybe, it's difficult. I mean, I think we're going to try our best to try to make that happen somehow, some way.
Sort of.
Because it is important. So what we are going to do, it was also put before us, it's just worth mentioning, to add two class sections actually, and there was a very strong case made for why that would be important, but we decided that we, as a committee, would prioritize just one and try to shift people around from Stewart to Proctor to mitigate the class sizes and keep everything, be able to keep everything at twenty or below.
So two more pieces of the puzzle that will go to the next step and other areas. One is, we do keep in mind that the schools are a bottom-line budget. So these are funding amounts and concept and attributable to these different things, but whatever funding level is given to the school, possibly with the exception of a specific warrant article, unless it's specified for a particular purpose in a distinct warrant article, you guys can move things around and do what you can to make it the most effective. That's one.
It's that great word fungible.
Fungible.
One is fungible.
All right, here's my last comment that I train the thought. I mean, I've been trained in town government here by an amazing amount of people, but they are who they are, and some of them unfortunately are not with us anymore. They come from the age in town government that they come from, for better or for worse. I've been taught that a certain constellation of approaches is more likely to result in a positive result at town meeting in particular at the bounds, and I've seen that work. Others believe that an approach that's worked in other communities but never been used here can be equally effective. I don't have a crystal ball, I don't know how to pretend you have, but I'm secure in what's been done in the past and what's been used in the past, and I believe that lessens the probability of defeat, or I should say positive, that it increases the likelihood of success. That's where I come from. I've always been taught that if you want anything passed in the town of Tobsfield for the dollar sign, you get the approval of the FINCO. Much more important than the approval of this illustrious board, obviously it's us that put things on the war, that's a specific responsibility. I think those of you who are able to agree, I was relatively assertive, using the FINCO in two nights to get a sense. After we put stuff on the warrant, they voted thumbs up or thumbs down, right? Everything at town meeting comes with their recommendation. So I did push them twice for, they weren't voting, so it's not official or formal, but a sense of what level of school override the FINCO is likely to support. So we're talking about going from zero to a substantive number, whether that makes everybody happy or not. My belief is that the positive recommendation from the FINCO was like gold at town meetings. So I'm only trying to be helpful in that sense. The FINCO told me two things. There was a, and again, it's a majority, that matters, right, still a majority, that they could support that four-hundred-and-sixty-eight number, which ties to the, what we've identified as levels. There were also were a couple of brave souls on the FINCO that stated they could possibly go higher. It did not reflect a majority at that moment, but it told us that there was some feeling. The number they gave rounded off was six hundred thousand dollars. So I, I think we, that doesn't bind us to anything, I'm not suggesting it does, but I think we should take that into consideration. So, and they have another meeting and they can go a different direction, but I would anticipate them, and again, just to stay within the bounds of this chart, I would anticipate the possibility that they could be brought up to the five ninety-three. I'm, I'm really, I don't want to be realistic, I don't have background deals with the FINCO. I'm at the public meetings, I'm watching and I'm listening, just like many of you guys are. But again, within that context, there may be some realistic possibility of getting the FINCO up to the restoration level. So that's step one that I think is something we should really think about. Now, the other, I don't want to be overly directive, I'm trying to get us in a certain way, you guys can rule me back, I go to the left, I go to the right, but we have a similar organized thought process. So one approach would be that the general school committee budget override, this is not a little number for the town of Tobsfield, be the five ninety-three number. If we're conceptually in that range, I'm not trying to be tricky to anyone, but I like the number five starting to get more than the number six starting, I don't think it has much of an difference. Notwithstanding that, that doesn't preclude continuation of all the security system.
Of what?
The security system. Is it just a possibility that we're trying to get us to a productive one? I don't, I don't want to be misunderstood that I'm saying that that goes up to there, that the securities comes off, that's not necessarily the situation. We'll get to our individual opinions in a moment. It also doesn't preclude the possibility of technology being funded to some extent.
I think it is important.
Just a moment, okay, I need to finish my thoughts on the new year of time, I don't want to catch up. I want to just spin this out, all right? Again, just personal opinions, we've got a hundred thousand dollar element in this that requests us to put in the budget, that can be thought of, and then we've got a three-ninety-two figure. Again, my, kind of one of my themes is laudable, but I don't think it's fiscally responsible for us to do everything in one year. So I offer the discussion of something like a two-year technology program. And that's where Captain's going to yell at me about free cash or something like that in a few minutes, but free cash, even within prudent fiscal management, free cash is a one-time, conceptually, it should be used to fund one-time expenses, not operating budgets, I know this, I know this sometimes. That's one approach. All right, so I'd like to throw that to the other members, Dick, I didn't mean to cut you off, I just wanted to finish.
Yeah, I just think it's important to sense keep, it's all tax dollars, but there's part to keep separate that which is operating and that which is the one-time. But again, it's all tax dollars and the issue is, does it keep going and operate things or is it these technology and surveillance that is essentially a one-time or capital expense, one point time?
And, and again, the reason I took the time, I appreciated everybody's indulgence to try and build it, is there is a logic to it, and one of the most frequent confusions, for lack of a better word, that comes to me over time, comes to us over time, is this thing about, well, let's put it on an override, and a lot of times the distinction between it being put on a separate warrant article and on an override, it takes people a while to understand that. So a separate warrant article is just what it sounds, it may or may not be funded, need to be funded by an override, which is why I started with this. So I, I don't know. Let's just say that there was a four-hundred divided by two is a two-hundred, just for purposes of discussion, a two-hundred thousand dollar one-time or rejuvenation, whatever we're doing, technology article. The question arises as to whether the FINCO can go back to here and find a little money or move things around or whatnot, but somehow fund that without the need for it to go onto an override, which means it only has to be passed that town meeting and not at the place. And Bill, so Mr. Spencer, sorry.
Don't think it's any secret that I'm a huge believer in the critical importance of education. In some senses, I'd argue it's the most important single responsibility of the entire town and its citizens. I have to say, sitting as a selectman as opposed to a school committee member, this is a gigantic fight and it's a tough one. And had I been able, I was not as much a part of the conversation as I perhaps could have been earlier, but I sort of wish I could see this in a two- or three-year rollout. One of the challenges we have in budgeting in general, and I know from my experience at Masco, is you put a number down and bang, it's just like a snapshot. And what we really need to see is the movie and what frame we're looking at now and look at where things are going. And I know it's tough and it's also politically difficult sometimes because there are some things that you might say, if we're going to keep going the direction we believe we should, but there isn't an end in sight to needs that can be just, could be justified and may can be justified. Anyway, that all said, I definitely believe and certainly support an override. I think absolutely at the very least, we have to get up to level services. That just, that is an absolute minimum. It's, I won't use the majority of language, it's unfortunate that we got the situation where we have to pay extra to catch up to where we should be all along, but we got to do it because we can't slip further. I know the importance of having specialists on hand for the folks who, unfunded mandate of, partially funded mandate of special education is the biggest crazy piece because that's not something you can project with nearly the accuracy of almost anything else. And indeed, I think the proposed warrant article to establish the special reserve fund for that is a huge step in the right way. I believe very strongly and have said a number of times to all of our representatives, in fact, Brad O'Nell so says, we're working on the joint one this evening. I truly believe that the state should be a funder, provider of our special education, that that ought to be done at the pool level so that, yes, if parents afford to and want to choose districts where the quality of services is better, they are not putting an undue burden on certain towns more than others and that, that is money that the town should, that the state should be collecting and helping us with in a lot of respects. I also feel that would bring much more attention to the statewide and if you will, nationwide problem of what's going on with increasing needs for special education. At many levels that when I joined Masco, weren't even talked about. We didn't talk about anxiety problems with kids. If you had an anxiety problem, it was that one or two kids who were in a class, you know, a school of almost two thousand kids. Nowadays, we talk in double-digit percentages of the students in any one class, not classroom, but class with these. And whether the world is getting to be more difficult to deal with, I won't go into the politics there, or whether it's just more discernment, more attention being paid to what could be provided in terms of service, a redefinition of what the spectrum of learning styles is and so on, it's happening and we don't have an option to do that. So my sense is, and I'm going to just throw something on the table here just to start things, I appreciate the importance of a new classroom section. Not doing that doesn't throw students out of class. I absolutely agree, smaller class, particularly kids, I believe the attention is important. With the possibilities of things like volunteers on certain days and other potential strategies that are low or no cost at, that could be available, my inclination is to put that into a priority list for the future. I would say the same thing, and this is the heart of my question, for about five-day tuition-free kindergarten, absolutely we should work towards that. I also believe at this point that if we have space and are doing it in the current base and do have an ability for people who cannot afford to get at least three days at no cost, that we're providing a service. The state may very well come along and say, well, guess what, those days are over, in which case we'll deal with it then. But my inclination would be to probably ask to defer those two. And the question about ongoing tech expansion, if there's going to be tech, new tech and so on and so forth, I'd be often inclined to maybe reduce that, not eliminate it, but potentially reduce that and sort of get a plan of going forward in bits. Now, my total when I do that ends up coming out to about three hundred thousand off total requests here. It's still a very long way from the six hundred that is sort of being seen by some as a sense of what there might already be some support for across a broad range of town folks. So I'm just putting it out that those are three items that I think can at low cost to educational quality and the quality of life for those living in town could be put into a later priority list. It's a start.
What else you want to say?
I'd like to say a few words. Well, I can't compete with the elegance of my two associates here, but I will tell you that I've always supported schools. I will always continue to support the schools. And I do not intend to make educational decisions for the school committee. I appreciate all the work you guys have done. I can't believe the number of hours that you've spent trying to do these jobs. I feel that we have a responsibility to all the people in town, not just the kids, but everybody, all the taxpayers. I do not agree with the all or nothing approach because I agree that if we go to town meeting with, with a finance committee recommendation of no action, that's a killer in my opinion because there's a lot of people there that aren't going to think about the ramifications of one way or the other. There are a lot of people there that listen specifically for the finance committee recommendation. I prefer a multi-year approach to try and do this. And, and I propose an override consistent with FINCO. And that probably is going to be in the six hundred thousand, maybe, maybe we could stretch it to that six seventy-six level. I really don't want to see just maintain level services. I think there's got to be some restoration to get us back in the direction that we ought to be going. And it would be nice if we could see some enhancements.
Lily?
I don't want to sound repetitive because I think a lot of the same thoughts are shared. I don't want schools to get into a problem where there's a lot of cutting that needs to go on because people have reacted against a very large figure. We heard so strongly last year about the need to keep taxes low and although we've gotten a lot of letters from. gotten a lot of letters from parents recently, letters about the tax, keeping the tax low have been incoming, you know, throughout the past months. So I would see structuring something that would be palatable, so that you don't fall further behind, and then maybe breaking out another component, as Boyd had said, that could be incremental, that the town could be voting on, so that you're hopefully guaranteed that you don't lose this base, so that you don't have to step backwards, but that the town has the chance to vote on some of these other things that you mentioned, but I would see separating it. Do have a question about the capital, the three-ninety-one. I think Dan had said that you guys had an inventory that you could provide to us, just to get a sense of what was in that four-hundred thousand.
The technology, yeah, yeah, yeah. Did nobody get that to you? All right, we'll, we'll check.
Wait, wait, wait. What do you want to know?
Yeah, what's in the three-ninety-one? We've asked you a couple of times.
No, no, let's just give it, let's not reset.
Yeah, we don't need to go through it step by step right now, because we're planning these in time.
Like X, X number of laptops, X number of servers.
That's exactly what I, if that's what you want, that's what I can do. All right, my glasses.
Yeah, I don't think we need to go through it right now, just for us to...
What, what, what level do you need?
Digest, just, is it all PCs? Is it, you know, because as I had mentioned before, we're, we put in twenty-six thousand as a request to get twenty-six workstations here, because they're not going to be supported any longer, and it's a risk. So that's a thousand a workstation, so that, for that four-hundred thousand or three-ninety-one, that could be three-hundred and ninety-one workstations. I don't know which divisioning.
That's not, right, no.
So that's why we're asking the question, just to get a sense of what that is, and then how that's going to be utilized.
All right, you ready?
Is it high enough level that?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so we're looking at sixty-seven total laptops. Chromebooks would be three-hundred-and-fifty-nine. iPads, a hundred-and-eighty-seven. Interactive boards, forty-one. Projectors or flat panel TVs, forty-six. And, let me see the last one, document cameras, twenty-five.
And Steve, are you, would you be ready, like, next month to buy those, if there were money available?
If the money is made available, we follow procurement law, and we will, because when we're talking about this, this volume, I review procurement law, either I'd work with state contract, or you go through state contract via the advisory, and you would solicit three quotes from vendors, so it would be Dell, Apple, it depends on the spec. If we're looking at Apple for one school, then it's just Apple. There may be some resellers, but if it's, you know, anything other than that, procurement, we go through procurement law.
Okay, the thought is, if you could spend it before the end of this fiscal year by purchasing, then there's another potential pool of money, perhaps, as an alternative to putting it in for fiscal year twenty. So I didn't know if you could buy it before the end of the fiscal year, if that's an option. A portion even, not the whole.
Well, it's, it's not about, it's really the funding capacity of the town, depending on what that is. If you, if the town said, okay, out of FY nineteen...
Yes.
We'll give you three-hundred and ninety.
That's what I'm talking about.
Right, three-hundred and ninety, if you say that to me, then I'm going to go buy.
That, that was my question. Would you purchase it physically or...
Could you, could you pull the trigger?
For the end of this fiscal year, if somehow magically...
If I know that in advance, yes.
We're looking at alternative specs.
Yes.
And spot on.
If, if everything is the same, except the number was not the four, it was a half or something.
Then, well, what it is, is the four, the four ninety represents the hundred, that was supposed to be part of the budget, and then the three ninety above. So that's where the whole four ninety, so let me reconcile that to the dollar, and what it was made up of.
Right, but your preferences aside for a minute.
No preferences.
Mechanically, you could do it incrementally if some money was available.
It goes back to the committee to deliberate, and, and if, if that's the way it works, then that's what, what we will do, but it is up to the committee to make that decision.
But mechanically...
Mechanic, oh.
The policy's with the committee, but, I mean, you're not buying one computer fifty years ago, and the whole computer costs greater than ninety dollars. It's different style.
Right.
Question, what is the current state of staff training on use of the laptop? In other words, we get all this technology, one of the classic problems in Massachusetts everywhere is, schools invest in all this technology, they've got all this hardware there, and the teachers are taking their notes, scanning them in, and if you will, just kind of projecting what they were using before from their old PowerPoint. The real benefit in my mind, and I think you get a, a strong agreement from Masco, and I can't speak for the other towns, is that when teachers, this is where the professional development gets to be so critical, learn how to use these in ways that the actual use of the computer engages kids, in an ideal world, in the way that games do, discovery learning does, all those sorts of things, that's when they start to shine and prove their value. And my concern is, if we did that all this year, the teachers just all ready to go, champing at the bit, or in fact, is that something that if we had some and could kind of, if we will pilot and build the program while the professional development is going on, that it might be a reasonable, I mean, I would absolutely commit to the long-term strategy, I'm just wondering if we have to do it all right now, that would be a great thing, if we could stretch it out with a rationale of using it for training. So when they do arrive, the teachers are ready to roll.
So, if I may, I have a couple of comments on that, and I'm going to ask Ms. Williams or Larry to give you perspective as far as how ready the staff is going to handle. Technology today in the classroom...